Any issues with that? We have one change, which is just spelling the doctor's name, which has been recognized and will be corrected. Other than that, can I get a motion? So approve. Second? Having a first and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Citizens opportunity to address the council. Where's Donna? Would anybody else like to address the council?
Yeah. Elizabeth Baker, One Care Show. It was mentioned at the Thursday meeting that we are awaiting answers to five or six questions, and I was just wondering what are those questions?
Did you receive a question in an email? Is that...
I don't know what they are.
Well, I'm not sure if you would ask a question. Or we're going to... I'll bring one to the desk tonight. Did you get it?
It's not on the agenda, but I was going to ask some questions once we got that out of business.
Okay. I think it was on the... I said, "For how many people?" Because I like to answer.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa Berry. I'm a 301 on the VTR. And I was wanting to confirm the questions to sort of different ones of us. I do still want to go on over here, though, asking you all to proceed in researching this. And I think the questions might get to that, only because so many people are just catching up. I mean, several of us here, obviously, have come to several of your meetings and other meetings in the last several months, but a lot of folks are just catching up and asking questions about what's going on, what's it all about. And I think it would be a disservice to them to abandon everything, like you have been asking other folks, without having a public forum, your own public forum, where we can ask new questions. And that's what they've asked, and I just wanted to go over there and ask them that.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What would you like to see researched? What questions do you have?
I want to know if there's...
I'm sorry. Did you want to write this? So we may have a recording.
One of the questions that I think is out there is, I'm curious to know if, you know, I figure you could probably ask, I don't know who, but can a couple of areas completely be held on this? Can they be a part, you know, the residents? How does all that work? I mean, that's one of the questions that's out there, and it can, you know, that's one of the things. Another thing would be the financial, you know, what, there's no lot of people questioning the finances of it. I think that has to be worked out before you come to a vote. Like, this is what we see right here. This is what it's going to be. Here's the option we're going to be, here's what it's going to cost the town, here's what we think it's going to cost the town, term best projections based on this debt. And then you have the sources for the debt. You want to know that. Buildings are still out there. I know there's central level agreement. I know this can be broken and broken all the time. It comes to the, I think we have to get other entities involved on like, do we want to? You're going to need to know what your citizens think, whether you go that far. And I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but if people, that will happen, but if the people, the majority of the people up here decide, hey, maybe this is a good thing. I think if three of the four parties sit through, I think that would be used to leverage a fourth party. I don't know. That's the way it's going to go.
Okay.
That's three.
Thank you. I was asking that because it's pertinent or something. Ask the ladies. Thank you. I think you hit three of the four, three of the five or six questions out there, so. Anybody else like to address the council?
I have an extra 30 or 40 seconds.
Yes, ma'am. Say your name first. We don't have any arguments.
I didn't want to dig or anything.
If we don't have too many, I'm fine with it.
Claire Rising, our 40 Care Show. And I'm going to speak, I'm out of the schools with the water system. The RFP, or Request for Proposal, that I'm going to refer to in my comments, is a document written by our town that solicits a bid from Walden Ridge Utility District, WRUD, and Tennessee American Water, TAW, to buy or manage our water system. The town started writing this RFP according to council minutes in October of 2015. They looked back at council minutes in 2016. Those staff sent this bid request out here to MTAS for review. When MTAS finished their review, the document was to be given to Mr. Howley, who helped write it, and Mr. Knoblet to make final revisions. Also, in 2016, I asked that the council hold public meetings before a vote was taken on this issue. The format I requested the council use for at least one vote was Q and A with one citizen at a time, able to ask a question, and everyone hear the answer from WRUD and TAW representatives, and I was assured that this would happen. In 2017, the council continued to discuss the status of the RFP and moved forward with it. And this past December, a week before Christmas, the RFP was finished and sent to the bidders, WRUD and TAW. The town staff has worked on this for over two years, but there are only five and a half weeks between the times the required bid is due to the town and a vote is taken by this council to determine the future of our water system. Included in that five and a half weeks is an 11-day span to hold the promised public Q and A meetings. This vote is definitely on the fast track. In fact, I could never remember any project's proposals or decisions moving to a vote so quickly. The MAC issue's been going on for over two years. The ISD is still going strong after a year. With those two issues taking up the time and energy and attention of the citizens and some of the council, now the water system's thrown out on the table. After over two years, can't you just wait a little longer? Many citizens thought putting our water system up for sale was not even a consideration of this council anymore, and they're in for a surprise. We even had seven months to weigh in on the four-acre rezon idea before that was dropped. So before you make a decision to probably sell this asset to count its own close to 80 years for millions of dollars, we deserve some time to learn about the two parties bidding on our system, ask questions that will actually get answers to, and let you, our elected officials, know where we stand. Our town manager, Mr. Beal, said he wanted to give this decision the attention it deserved. He further stated, quote, "I don't want this to be something that's just in the mix. We need to make sure we have time and ability to pay close attention to it," unquote. So please, take it out of the mix. Let the citizens give this decision that attention that Mr. Beal is talking about. The millions of dollars in the water fund that was transferred to the Town General Fund, if the water system is stalled, will still be there a few months from now, and the citizens at least will be able to get some answers and let the council know where they stand on this. You were elected to make important decisions, but you also represent the people who elected you. Please don't run past us in your haste to break this to a vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Cantrell, 105 South Broad. Quick clarification, Carol. That balance you gave me in the water fund of $3,302,000, was that in that of the ironwood money, $999,000?
You asked for where we were at, why it's submitted, and that's what I produced. So some of it has ironwood, and some of it probably is not all there.
Okay. Well, I mean, that helps. That's great. Okay. Also, this committee that's going to study the RFP, that's going to make a recommendation, those meetings, are they going to be public and open?
No.
They're supposed to be.
For an evaluation committee?
Yeah.
They're simply evaluating the proposals.
Right.
They're not... I checked the legal counsel, but I'm not sure that's the case.
Well, there was a couple of issues that came up in Chattanooga, and I think Ben's team wasn't involved. I had a long conversation with somebody today. They said, I said, "Am I safe?" They're saying this is about 100% safe, but I will have confirmation tomorrow because it's an advisory to...
We will...
It was like the, what is it, the health insurance?
Ms. Cantrell, we will check it, and if it's required to be public, it will be public.
Okay. Well, I'll check it, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I did a question. I remember back when we discussed this as a council. I remember asking also, we intend to have public hearings before any decisions made, correct? That's what we discussed. Is what Claire said accurate as far as the timeline is concerned? That it was only 11 days?
I don't have it in front of me at this moment, but we have a tentative schedule, which is scheduled in the RFP document. And I just don't have it in front of me at this moment.
So I guess I would ask...
Schedule's flexible as well.
Right. Yeah. You have to schedule it in RFP so that people who are responding know, have some sort of idea of the timeline. Right. So if we didn't have time for the public comment, we'd delay the vote. I think we'll make...
We have all the time. I think we'll make that. There's nothing that requires the town to take action on the RFP period, so there's a warning regarding what proposals come in.
So the council, that's not by resolution, that's a management decision?
No, I'm just saying that if you have the flexibility to choose not to accept any of the proposals, you certainly have the flexibility to extend the period by which you can, during which you can consider those proposals. Well, one of the things we're going to consider is whether or not to maintain it internally.
Right.
And so we have to develop that cost and compare that to something. So that's what the RFP is for, compare it and determine which is the most logical, be cost-effective way to follow. So there was a whole slew of evaluations.
Have you ever had meetings on what we're going to have an RFP or not? As far as not for this particular project, but in general, as far as she's saying that we have to have a public meeting just to discuss an RFP. I mean, it seems like that that's not the typical way to go.
No, I don't think so. And to clarify one thing, we didn't write the RFP for Tennessee American, Walden Ridge Utility District. We wrote the RFP and advertised it, and then entities requested it. And there is some confidentiality associated with this process that Phil has directed us on. So it wasn't geared toward any particular entities. There are presumptions of who might be interested, but so somebody else completed, it was advertised, it requested, and it was delivered. So if another firm wanted to, it could pick it up and bid on it too, right? It's not just... Yeah. Anyone who had included or requested it would have been provided with it.
I think we'll, I'm assuming you'll have your group that looks at it, and you'll bring that information to the council, and the council will decide, we need to have a public hearing on it or what.
Again, in the schedule, we have a period for public hearings. Now, if that period is insufficient, I don't see any reason why the council couldn't extend the period. But there's a general timeline associated with the process. Again, since you have the latitude to...
To Jake's point, it's a large project, and to Mr. Exner and Ms. Cantrell's point, it's a large project and a large asset, and we need to take it under a look at it.
It's going to depend on what the proposals are that you actually receive, because there's several different options that are included in those proposals, some of which does simply include management of your water system as it exists. That's one of the things that you go to determine whether you want to manage it or whether you want to have that asset away from the town and someone else doing that and owning those assets. To the latter, there also has to be a mandatory referral procedure before the planning commission before that can happen.
Do the companies that picked up packets and will potentially respond have the option to say, "I don't want to buy it. I'm just going to submit under the management piece," or "I don't want to manage it. I don't want to submit under the purchase piece." Yes, okay.
We may decide we want people to manage it.
Right.
That is mischaracterized, very mischaracterized as a fast track, and that could be a slow.
Yeah, I think so.
Anybody else like to address the council? Okay. Where's Ethan? Ethan, how you doing?
All right, all right.
Good. I'm sorry that we've gotten a little bit into this, but we will move to mayor for a minute, so you can come on. There you go.
My name is Ethan Fell. I hereby call this Town Council meeting to order. Town of Signal Mountain State. Town of Signal Mountain Tennessee Proclamation, whereas the Town Council, Town of Signal Mountain, recognizes the importance of our community's young citizens, and whereas great responsibility comes with their role as our community's future leaders. And whereas Ethan Fell, a sophomore at Signal Mountain High School, has demonstrated leadership qualities by serving as an officer for the Sophomore Student Council, Southeast High School Model Human United Nations, and as a youth and government officer for the Tennessee YMCA Center for Civic Engagement. And whereas Ethan has been active in his school and community through organizations and activities such as Church Youth Choir, Leo Club, Mock Trial, Move Theta Math League, SMMHS Theater Department, and Hamilton County Youth Court Program. And whereas Ethan has been engaged in scouting since becoming a Cub Scout in first grade and has recently completed his Eagle Scout project, installing a sidewalk at San Powell Trail in Shackelford Ridge Road, improving the pedestrian pathway to the Nolent Elementary, and thereby enhancing the safety of students and their families. Now therefore, I, Chris J. Howley, Mayor of Town of Signal Mountain, hereby proclaim and recognize Ethan Fell as a mayor for the minute, mayor for a minute, at this January 2018 meeting of the Signal Mountain Town Council. In witness thereof, I appear to set my hand and cause this seal to be to fix on January 8th, 2018.
I'd like some applause.
Hey, you got 30 seconds. You want to say? Thanks, Tom. Well, first of all, I know that a lot of my involvement with the Town Council came about because of my Eagle Scout project. Ms. Mayor Howley talked a little bit about that, and so I'd like to thank any of you who are in this room. I know Councilman Langham donated my campaign, and he got a lot of that started. And as well, all of you, all of you on the council have been incredible in supporting me and, you know, spreading word through this process. And if any of you out here tonight have donated to the campaign or have spread support on Facebook, I'd like to thank you for that. And I'd like to thank the council for this amazing opportunity. And so, thank you very much.
Excellent. We gotta go. You need a good picture, Carol? You want a picture?
Can I get a picture of everybody?
Yeah. We'll go right down here. Real quick.
Thank you, Melissa. We're sorry that this was not on my calendar and that we were late.
Ethan, really, this is the fun part of the job, being able to deal with this sorts of thing, recognize people from the community who give back, and that really was an important topic.
Thank you.
I bet during your process, I know during your process, you learned that government doesn't necessarily work as quickly as a lot of them. But I'm glad the community came together and helped me with that.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution honoring Gray Wagner. Did that shut down the vote count? Here? I think we did. Okay.
Did you ask if anybody else, and I don't believe anybody stepped forward.
Okay. Next, we'll go into a resolution, and that resolution is honoring Gray Wagner. Resolution number...
2018 dash 1.
Oh, she gets to be the first one. 2018. Resolution recognizing honoring Gray Wagner in recognition and celebration of her 100th birthday, declaring January 25th, 2018 to be Gray Wagner Day in the Town of Signal Mountain. Is there anybody here representing Gray? Okay. Do I need to read through the whole thing, you think?
Yes.
Is anyone, you mentioned earlier that it's been a place to change it.
Yeah, I was going to do that with whoever gave the motion, like, request a, make that change.
Should I read through the whole thing? Is that consensus?
Well, I think it gives a lot of history to our town, so I think it's worth doing. Whereas Gray Wagner spent many decades as an active and engaged citizen of Signal Mountain. And whereas Ms. Wagner truly made Signal Mountain her family's home, raising nine children and welcoming many grandchildren to our community. And whereas Ms. Wagner, Ms. Wagner supported and encouraged her late husband, Joseph Papa Joe Wagner, as he served as a Signal Mountain Town Attorney for more than 50 years. And whereas Ms. Wagner has been active in numerous community and civic organizations, including Girl Scouts, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Junior League of Chattanooga. And whereas Ms. Wagner has had a tremendous impact on Signal Mountain and the Chattanooga area through her dedicated service to her faith community, being involved in opening the current location of St. Jude School and Notre Dame High School, volunteering at St. Augustine Catholic Church and Alexium Brothers, serving as president of the Diocese of Knoxville Council of Catholic Women and the National Council of Catholic Women. And whereas such distinguished service was recognized in 1975, when Pope Paul VI awarded her the Pro...
Ecclesia...
Ecclesia A Pontifice, the highest medal that can be awarded to the lady of the patency. And whereas Gray Wagner will celebrate her 100th birthday on January 25th, 2018, and will begin her second century of aspiring family, friends, and her fellow citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council, that the Town Council of the Town of Signal Mountain Tennessee recognizes and honors Gray Wagner for her service in this and neighboring communities, and for the example and inspiration she has been and continues to be to her fellow citizens. And be it further resolved that in recognition and celebration of her 100th birthday, January 25th, 2018, is hereby declared to be Gray Wagner Day in the Town of Signal Mountain. Now, before you do, I got a call from Bob, her son, and they're having a celebration for her on the 27th, which is not the 25th, and they would prefer that, even though her birthday's the 25th, that the 27th be her day. That way, when we're giving her the certificate, we're not saying, "Hey, by the way, two days ago was your day, but today is your day." So if somebody can make a motion with that change, I would appreciate it.
I'll make the motion with that change.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner, for many of you, was the town attorney for the town here for 50 years. He was pretty an inspirational guy to me as a young guy back in 1998, whenever I started to actually help him a little bit with issues back one time with, I guess, folks putting dummies outside of trucks on the CBS property, a long time ago. It was interesting to me that Mr. Wagner had lived through this entire century at that one time here on the mountain, basically in this town his entire life. His wife and he raised nine kids here in this area. It was interesting to hear Joe talk about riding the trolley car to school at Central High School down the mountain all those years ago. And it was also interesting to hear him talk about how many moonshine spills we had on Shaw Creek Road back in those days. We've come a long way over the years, and I think this is appropriate. It's her 100th birthday coming up, and she should be right here.
You know, her son Bob is an interesting character, a very good guy, and has worked with voice camps over at our church for quite a long time. But he told me a story today about how the old council meetings used to be held in the old fire station building over there where the CBS is now. He said they had three desks, and we'd come in, and at that time, the mayor was also a judge, didn't have to have any law background or anything. And the judge, people would come in, and no matter what they came in for, just, or Bob says, remembers the judge saying, "Oh, that'll be $5, and that'll be $5." And they'd hold court, and drunk and disorderly, $5, whatever it was, $5. And then they'd close that down and go right into a council meeting. It was just a bunch of people sitting around three desks, and they'd drink coffee and chew fat, have the council meeting. If there was a fire, they'd have to pause for a few minutes because the sirens are so loud, and they'd go right back at it. But it was just about a neat, neat story he shared.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolution passes. Not a good one. Next is going to be a public hearing regarding amending Article 6, Schedule of District Regulations. Boy, can you smell this about?
This comes in advance of the second meeting for zoning change, where daycare centers will be added to the list of acceptable activities in the Highway Commercial District. And also language identifying the, how the special permits will be reviewed in that section of...
Okay. You have to have principal uses permitted in order to be able to have it within a highway commercial zone. This is one zone that they currently not allowed in for some reason in our zoning ordinance. Planning Commission has recommended that you include them in that area. The other aspect is this is issues where if they are not run by governmental units or religious organizations, they have to have a special permit as well issued by the board of zoning officials. So there's a two-step process for non-governmental entities and requirements to actually have some review. And the good thing is that there is review of plans for points of ingress, parking, and loading facilities by having connection with the parking and the daycare facility. And that's the reason for those requirements.
I'm going to declare a public hearing regarding this open. Who may like to speak? Seeing no one, I am going to declare a closed meeting. So next, we go into the ordinance itself. Ordinance number, oh, it's not given, right?
This one is because it's second, and it is also 2018 dash 1.
Okay. Ordinance number 2018 dash 1, an ordinance to amend Article 6, Schedule of District Regulations of the Signal Mountain Zoning Ordinance Regarding Allowing Daycare Centers in the Highway Commercial District. Any discussion? So want to make a motion?
A little for...
I get a second. All right, we have the first and the second. Discussion?
Should we have just a bit, so folks know why this is happening? It's basically because the building that...
You have to have principal uses permitted in order to be able to have it within a highway commercial zone. This is one zone that they currently not allowed in for some reason in our zoning ordinance. Plan Commission has recommended that you include them in that area. The other aspect is this is issues where if they are not run by governmental units or religious organizations, they have to have a special permit as well, which should be the board's own appeal. So there's a two-step process for non-governmental entities and requires them to actually have some review. And the good thing is that there is review of plans for points of ingress, parking and loading facilities by having connection with the parking and the daycare facility, and that's the reason for those requirements.
I'm going to declare the public hearing regarding this open. If anyone would like to speak. Seeing no one, I am going to declare a closing. So next, we go into the ordinance itself. Ordinance number, oh, it's not given, right?
This one is because it's second meeting, and it's also 2018-1.
Okay. Ordinance number 2018-1, an ordinance to amend Article 6, Schedule of District Regulations of the Signal Mountain Zoning Ordinance Regarding Allowing Daycare Centers in the Highway Commercial District. Any discussion? So want to make a motion?
A little.
I get a second. All right, we have the first and the second. Discussion?
Should we have just a bit, so folks know why this is happening? It's basically because the building that the recitals was, and there's been a restaurant there, someone wants to buy it and have daycare there, and our divisions don't allow it. So daycare can do it.
And the planning commissions?
The planning commission, thank you.
You have them?
Yes.
And normally, you don't do zoning amendments, discuss somebody wants one, you do it because you think that's in the best interest of the town, and the question in this case will be whether it should be appropriate in a highway commercial zone at all, and then what type of standards should you have, and that's the reason the planning commission has recommended that you do it, but that you do it with certain requirements on the front end that'll protect the community. And that's what you have in 1203 for the review for special exceptions.
Yeah, and we also have several divisions that are similar, and it just so happens that this was one that didn't allow it.
Correct.
It could have been a different one and been used the same way throughout all these years, so it's not like it really changed too much.
Yes, sir. So this one allowed in the highway commercial district here.
Right. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Order passed. That was final reading, right? Good. Next, we have discussion starting with the Timberlands Playground. Is this council meeting this year?
Voice move. I was supposed to be on there. It also came up in the planning commission, yes, and we were fortunate to have Jared there. I think Jared's here this evening, and he said, "The engineering has been done on the fields, and as far as that, the athletic portion of it is concerned, it doesn't affect that raised area that's the playground, and one of the things we were discussing was parks, were parks and playgrounds." And seeing as how the council set aside money, when that was taken out, to go and put it back in, and spring is on its way, we wanted to see, I wanted to see if we could get that going forward so that we could park back in there. And Jared said, "It's already, the engineering's actually already been done." Now, what he didn't say, I realize this after the meeting, was how much, we set aside $35,000 at the time of the recording, et cetera, how much the new bid was.
I think hopefully the plan was, was going to be a two-stage process, so that we could put some of the equipment in and the playground reestablished there, but I think it was grander than that for future expansion, so I'm not sure exactly which pieces went first across part of that process, but the plan itself is for more equipment than the 35 we'll purchase, but the plan is that it would be segmented, and the rest of it we purchase.
And we're going to plot for a grant.
Correct. Because that, because Timberlands covered that, you know, that's a lot of... The grant, the different facilities for manning and driving fields to be rebuilt along with the supporting structures.
The Norris field was included in that.
No.
The money was set aside last year, is the money, was the money set aside again this year for that?
It was rebudgeted.
So it was, okay.
The notion being to basically just kind of postpone that until we look and see if that was how we wanted to use that piece of property, that there was an immediate need to redirect any funds.
I thought you were talking about...
The plan has always been to rebuild the playground, and just whether or not we're going to rebuild at the same place, because we might be able to move it in another location where we might be able to squeak out another field, because REC is having a really hard time finding field space, particularly for lacrosse and flag football.
So we don't have a price on it then?
I don't know of a price to move it right now, but we have money set aside, and I don't know that it's changed.
Yeah, Jared...
The REC board hasn't met in several months, there's been a conflict almost, probably in three months, but I'm happy to, I agree with you, I'd like to be able to refocus.
Can we get the prices maybe at the agenda meeting, make a decision there?
Sure.
Have we confirmed that that's where we're going to build back on that location?
No, that's, that's...
That's still an open question.
That's still a question, the REC board hasn't been able to meet to determine how we're going to get that out, or the playground's going in, it's just weird.
Okay, right, but Jared did say, "Would," correct me, because I might have misunderstood this, that since it didn't look like that was needed or even possible for the redoing of the REC field, since it was higher, it's that little triangle area, that he spoke with, is it called Game Time? The Game Time company has already, what he called Game Time, I was thinking it was PlayCor or something like that. I think it's a division. Oh, is it? Okay, so he said, "Yeah, they already came and done, made a proposal on it, on that triangle spot, that would work there."
Do you know how much it was?
I don't, and that's, that's what we need to find out. The reason I'm letting it on here is because we know how long it takes to get things done.
Yeah, let's find out.
I'm also sure the RFP, doesn't it?
Or what?
I'll have to look back and see. I believe PlayCor...
Yeah, single source.
I believe PlayCor is a, has a contract with a purchasing cooperative.
Is that okay? Is that satisfied now, or just...
Yeah, perhaps.
We have to wait for the REC board to...
Right.
When's the REC, is the REC board meeting this one?
I hope so. I don't have a meeting yet.
Maybe, obviously.
Jared, I will make a point to get that.
So if we get it by the agenda meeting, which is the 27th this year?
26.
Right.
Still less than...
26.
Yeah, it's the fourth prime. 26. So if we get about 26, and we can figure out where we're going to go from there, if that's the end of the meeting, and if we need to move quick, we can get it done by favor.
Great.
Is it good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Any other, what have we got? So, is this, is this where, is this under business or discussion verse? Because I want to talk about the school thing. Let's say it's under other business.
Go ahead.
Yep. So, my concern now, and it has been, this isn't really all that new, is that, is one of standing, and even legal standing, but without reading the definition of legal standing and just going into what standing is, it means you have the ability to do something, to step in, and you potentially have harm, or you have an association with it somehow. And this, this is going to sound flippant the first thing I'm going to say, but it's the easiest way to couch it. I don't think this council, we as a council, me included, have any more business telling the schools what to teach than we do when we have telling the preacher at one of our churches what to preach, and that, you know, we can say that particular church can't sell out, you know, without license, but as far as the programming is concerned, so that's sort of the basis of where I'm starting with this, and this will take about two minutes just to get my thoughts out of the down. What we do have standing to do as a council is to petition the state to use the existing law in order to create an independent school system. We have standing to do that. Part of that subsequently would require something else we have standing for, which is to petition the citizens as to whether or not they want that to happen. We have standing for that as well. We, in order to explore that, seated a committee, the SSBC, and the purpose was to determine the viability, oh, somebody's saying, determine the viability of if that could be successful, if we could successfully petition that at the state level. The answer that the SSBC came back with was yes, if, and no, you know, if not, I mean, that's, that's pretty much the way the whole thing works out. Now, that committee that did that, there are now two representatives of that committee that no longer live here, and they represent two very important areas that will be affected by this thing. One of those committee members is going to be in the area of Hamilton County, and one of those committee members is going to be in, you know, obviously two huge stakeholders in this thing, and they aren't even in the committee anymore. I'm concerned about this meeting coming up Thursday. I don't think anything else should happen until those committee members are replaced, and people need to petition the council to be on that committee again, and the council needs to figure out what to do, you know, who we want on that committee, because it was, it was deliberated to determine who the committee members are. So that's one. And the second part of this is I'm concerned that, I know there's discussion taking place, I know this for a fact, to now look at Signal Mountain and our 1,700 or so potential students as being an independent school district on their own, regardless of unincorporated council and county. And I, and I know this, this is taking place, and I'm concerned that that's way beyond the scope of what the council ever talked about, being something that we were interested in pursuing to begin with. So, back to, back to standing, I want to know, why is the committee meeting this Thursday? I think they shouldn't meet this Thursday until that committee has reseated the SSBC. They need council resolution, maybe council direction before they meet again as to what is they are supposed to do, and I want to know who told them to convene and why, and what is the council's direction, because I believe giving that direction is the only area where we have standing. In your email, if I read it correctly, you asked to enumerate the questions that remain open. Is that, did you just leave that off, or is that, is that coming later? Because that's, I would like, I would like to formalize those questions for the rest and make sure that we have that clear also, so I just, I don't want to step in there unless you, you're not planning to, so.
That would seem to be if the SSBC was going to meet again, that they would need to have those questions clarified by council and on record, but I don't think the SSBC should meet again until the SSBC represents what it was intended to represent, because we've lost two members who don't live here.
I don't disagree with that, I didn't...
So I think it's a secondary question, so I'd like to hear the first part.
I just want to make sure we get it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm coming, thank you.
Okay.
I haven't agreed with that. I think that the SSBC has completed its report, presented it, they have answered numerous questions concerning that report. We haven't talked about any activity or questions beyond the scope of the original request, so I don't believe that it's justified at this point for the SSBC to, to, to meet again, even if they were a complete committee, until we talk and decide that we want them to meet again.
Yeah, that's right.
And so I'm, I'm, I believe in hiring, and for the first time.
That's a good...
No, no, that's good, I just couldn't resist. But I would like to see the questions that we continue to refer to that are open, that were asked before, during the time of the SSBC.
What is the subject of their meeting that's going to occur? I mean, is their subject...
Well, that's the question, and I don't know the answer.
I can, I can read the agenda, that would help.
I got the email just so that you can hear it.
I mean, but if the question's on the table, I can see what it is, that would help us. But it's, it's pretty generic.
The last time they met, they corrected something in their report, is that what they were doing at the beginning of this?
No, this is just, it was, it was more general about determining what their next steps were.
This appears to me like it's an attempt to combine, how we can combine, or how the three communities of Hamilton can be combined into a, to have a district, and that's all on the...
That, that is within their burden. I asked a question whether that was even the case, but that never came from the council.
Well, that was, we laid out about four or five things that they had, had to be achieved before we would even consider moving forward.
My recollection was that it's all done together as a community. My recollection is that we have to go back and look for the minutes made in the committee certain, but it seems like to me that, that that particular issue was carved out.
I think you're right.
I think, I think that particular was carved out and not, and deliberately left to sign, because it didn't seem to be within their, their ability to resolve.
The buildings was carved out.
The building, I think both of the issues.
Okay.
See, I'm one from my part, so I miss your phone.
And I will also ask, before we go too far down, any tangents? I think we need to address the fact that the SSBC isn't properly seated anymore to begin with, because it doesn't, I don't think it matters unless it goes to questions.
They had, I'm assuming everybody here read the report, right? Okay. They had four different options on how to do, to bring the community together and make it work, but what they couldn't, what we, and I think we asked them, in fact, I didn't know, because I asked a question, I asked them to expand on how, how do you make each one of those happen, and then what are the results? When I say what are the results, are the, does that allow students from those areas first status similar to Signal Mountain, does that allow folks in that area to vote in a referendum, does that allow those, those folks to sit on school boards type thing?
Right, again, I'd like to ask...
So it was part of the, it was reported, it wasn't taken off what they were supposed to look at, but what they hadn't done is illustrate with each of those four options, how you got it done, and what the potential result would be.
Sure.
And to me, that's a pretty darn important question.
And if the council wants the SSBC to do that, the council needs to vote on that. But right now, the SSBC isn't even seated properly anymore. That's my concern, is that the council needs to go ahead and take that step and fix that, and then if we have something we want them to do, we need to deliberate as a body.
I think that is, again. I don't think they should discuss the buildings.
This is inclusion. So, so for the sake of the audience, it's call it order, roll call, approval of minutes, discussion of final reports and unresolved questions, buildings, inclusion of three communities, finance, and other business of the chair. So who, who put this together on what authority?
Dr. Free.
And he's the chair of that committee? So does he have the authority to do that?
He has the authority to call a meeting.
I think we as a council need to direct him not to discuss the buildings issue, if that's something that's definitely within their burden.
Well, who at this meeting, and should they meet, and I think they shouldn't, but who at this meeting should they meet, would represent unincorporated Hamilton County and Walden?
Well, Tom Peterson will represent Walden.
But he doesn't live here anymore.
And he's in Hickson.
Living in Hickson.
So you don't think he can do the...
No, I don't.
I disagree.
He's a, he's a nice person, but he doesn't live there anymore. This isn't, I'm not, this isn't against his character.
Go back to the original, when we seated it, was that their, were they specifically representing this, or we were just picking, we had an option of saying, "We can choose one from unincorporated, one from Walden."
Yeah, we didn't have to, there was a requirement, we can certainly fill in with whatever we want.
I guess we did, but I think good judgment would, would compel us to represent all of the communities on the mountain.
Except for Hickson.
Except for Hickson.
I agree, but... What, what harms the rest of the meeting? We're not, doesn't mean we're taking any...
No, but that, I would have liked John to come to the council and say, I mean, for all the work, it looks like the, the work is done, it's just a formality that we have not dissolved the committee. And so I think to, to extend the scope, I mean, to me, this, I mean, the buildings are on there, so it extends the scope was what we asked him to do. I think, I think Dr. Free should have come to the council and say, "Here's what I have in mind, do you, would you support me?" And I haven't, and you know, that's not the kind of talking that he has, and I'm not the... And, and given that's not the kind of talking that he has, and I'm not the only one. So I'm kind, I'm kind of, I'm not sure if we're precisely in the right, you know, agreeing on the process, but I think philosophically we agree. I, I think that we need to give, before the, the committee meets again, and if we want them to meet again, we need to give some guidance on what we want them to, to go for.
Are we stepping anything in here for help or not?
I'm sorry, I just was not aware of this. I think I had a vote all day from Mr. Friedel, I was not present, I was dealing with issues on tips this morning here at Chattanooga, so that was another matter I was dealing with. But I, I was already, he's gonna have a meeting on Thursday night this week, so.
Thursday morning, actually, at ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yeah.
It would make it a lot neater if he did come to the agenda meeting and what he did suggest.
It's funny. Yeah. Might we do that? Once we hear his explanation or?
Well, that's, that's still not addressing.
Figure out if we need to put somebody else on the committee to?
That's not addressing our primary two concerns that I would like for the council to discuss.
Which was them having a meeting on Thursday and noting additional reforms?
The two, the two members, council needs to determine what it is they're going to do, they don't determine what it is council is going to allow them to do moving forward. They've done what they asked them to do.
Don't we want to hear what he has to say?
Sure, yeah, fine. And, and any member of this council is free to call Dr. Friedel this evening, that's not a violation of any, any rule. But council hasn't spoken, the only standing that we have is as a body by resolutions. And this committee is representing council and reporting to council, and it's time for council to step up and say, this is what we want, or not, or not.
Or not. If he comes to the agenda meeting, we find out what he wants and done, and this council can decide if we want them to do it or not. So I, what am I making?
I'm hoping that we have delayed this meeting.
Request that, request that.
Do not meet.
Right.
Until we get.
Is there a problem with us doing that, Phil?
No. I mean, this body, the SSBC is supposed to do what all I asked them to do, the council has asked us to do.
In cons, in consideration of Dan's request, which I think, I think is very reasonable, um, come to the agenda meeting and determine what, whatever. Can we collect applications from the unincorporated and Walton? Anybody that wants to step on the floor? In the meantime, that way, that way at the meeting, we can, if anybody has to say, if we don't want it, we can tell them, no, we can't do it, but if we do, we'll be prepared to replace those people.
I would like to see council go on record as to what it is they want from this committee going forward, and then you put out requests for people who might like to be on the committee so that they can know what it is that they're getting into. If you have a committee that says, we want to consider using just seventeen hundred, that's one of the things we've on the table, just Signal Mountain.
We've always wanted to have heard that, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, yes, well.
I'm curious, like, did you elaborate on that?
Well, I at this point, but I, but I will mention.
But I'd like to know the source because I'm not sure, and it's certainly not, I don't think it's come out of council.
And no one on this council would even agree to that, I mean, that's just crazy.
I'll just sit here and swing the whip for now, but it's, it's absolutely, and there were people at this, at least a person at this table, who knows a hundred percent that what I'm saying is, is true.
Who?
I'm not gonna do that right now. I'm not doing that.
Well, let's, John is pleading and the game is coming. And we do need, I think it's a personal matter to enumerate questions if this we can that are open, that we are still trying to answer to and make them all, put them on record.
So, so what are the questions? Are we okay with Dan's suggestion on these two issues and asking that if people come and be in the agenda meeting?
I, I agree.
Okay. But you're also asking that Dr. Friedel may be correct, so he, Boyd, could you handle that, please?
So we'll handle it.
And we don't want them to have any meetings until they come to our agenda meeting.
And then at the agenda meeting, we can decide whether we do that, whether it is, give them, the questions that were asked earlier are very legitimate, as, as at the meeting last Thursday, when you said there were five things, I'm on this council, I've been to every meeting, I've watched every SSBC meeting, I've listened to the tapes, I couldn't enumerate, and, and I, if you enumerated the five right now, what would they need? That's what we're gonna do next. I want to, one issue at a time here, okay? Is that okay with everybody?
You can do the vote.
I don't think we need to vote.
Do we?
If you want to instruct, Mr. Friedel to come to the next meeting, you probably ought to vote to have him come to the next meeting, and then at that one time, you can discuss what I, I'd like you to do.
So I make a motion that Dr. Friedel be invited to come to the work session, uh, the twenty-seventh, Saturday?
Twenty-sixth.
And postpone the meeting and not meet with the SSBC until council has had a chance to direct what it wants from them.
I'll say. Should we, and just, we have a first and a second. Should we in that time period be collecting applications in case it is something that council's interested in?
We gotta wait.
We gotta wait.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Boyd, would you handle that for the district?
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, we just leave. Yes, Boyd, you got, you got the issue about, I just want to make sure that it gets addressed about the station house that I wrote about this afternoon. Just, just to make sure that, should I, I'm going to just mention what it is that?
We're going to, we're going to the five questions.
Okay, yes, let's do the five questions. You're right, sorry. Boyd and Phil, can you talk to us about some of the questions that are out there now?
Sure. It is, one of the issues, I guess, in this process is how do you get unincorporated, Hamilton County, the town of Signal Mountain, and Walton residents able to vote on the issue that might be affected? Whether those three entities can create a special school district or whether it can only be a municipal school district and only one municipality can get involved in? That's one of the crux issues we're dealing with on the, the question of who gets to vote. Because if it can only be done by a municipal entity, then that's a question of whether the town of Signal Mountain would be the only entity voting on the issue.
Not only vote, but to pay.
Yes, and actually pay for some utility for that.
That's the question of standing, so that's one.
Well, the standing is very clear that the town would have municipal, created a municipal district, would have standing to deal with a system. The system that I've heard this body question the entire time is one for the mountaintop, not for an issue of just the town of Signal Mountain. And that has been a point of, I guess, dissension and diversion as we come through this process. That is an issue that the state can help us a little bit upon in that process as to what is available and what is not available.
Well, is the purpose here to discuss these as we, as they come up?
Well, I don't know. I would prefer not, I would, I just wanted to direct and get the, get the questions on the record, and then we'll have time to pursue them down the road. This question, this particular question is, is a lot of first question.
And I, and I think we should dedicate some significant time to our agenda meeting.
I want to take a second just to make this statement. These questions are not council questions. Council hasn't decided these are the questions, this isn't half the thing for them, it's not in stone. And so there might be other questions that the council members consider to be just as valid.
Absolutely, that's my fault. I don't think, I don't think anybody said any different.
Correct. But we're trying to define.
I've got questions.
It seems to be open.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got questions, I'm trying to find the answers to, because I can't make a decision until I get the answers to. Boyd, another one was verification on the number of students in the town, correct?
Correct. Before, before we can have a referendum, the last commission stated that we would have to have verification from the state that we have sufficient student population. And so we communicated with Tennessee Department of Education on how exactly we get that verification. They originally said they didn't do that until after a referendum, a telephone conversation, and they better understood what it was we were looking for, sent them additional information from the last census, and the ACDE records showing what students live in the, the newly annexed areas. Basically said, this is the information we have, is this something that you would use to make that determination or would you need something additional? And communicated that question to them, and I've had a response on that.
That's two. The third question was the in-kind question. And we found out recently through the Tennessee Department of Education that it's something we had to direct towards the attorney general, am I getting that term wrong? The county or the office? Yeah, county or somewhere else. Uh, the fourth question was, who has got the whole thing?
One was.
The magnets?
No, maybe other than just how other parts of the community anticipate, but how the students in the areas outside of the town could be guaranteed to be part of the system as opposed to being allowed to attend the system, and how that mechanism, if it exists, could be facilitated.
No, we have one. Oh, the buildings, buildings and land was another question.
That's a, that's a topic, that's not a question.
What's the question? Uh, the question is to the state's attorney, his opinion on it.
But what's the question, his opinion on my question?
What would happen to the buildings?
That's a big question on acquisition. It seems to be. So question four and question one seem to be related?
Yeah.
And maybe back to the same question. More, more devil's sin with students.
People being able to vote and be part of the current process and the ability to ensure students outside of town or guaranteeing any, any, a very close.
Full career in the, in the system.
Yeah, the in-kind's important because that's something that would potentially allow us not to have to raise taxes at all.
So, these questions are, are questions being asked of different entities, there are mentioned a few of them. There are also questions of citizens and also questions of intent that I think we haven't been able to have a proper discussion about. And when we had the discussion in the work session, I would like us to have those questions on the table as well, that's.
Good. Hopefully we'll have answers, probably makes the discussion that much more.
Good.
Anything else?
So that's all the, we, we refer to the five questions.
We all agree that that's the third gap.
No, we all agree that those are Chris's questions. These are not the questions the council has decided, Chris's questions that Chris has been asking.
That's understandable, but that's fine. And anybody on this council is.
No.
To look for answers however they want to this issue.
I'm not agreeing with you, I just want to make sure that Dick understands, I'm not agreeing that these are our questions.
No, no, I'm not suggesting, I didn't say that, Dan, I said these are the questions that are considered open. If when we, when, when we're referring to five questions to clarify, what are those five questions that seem to be still in the process of examination? Those are the, we agree, those are the five questions.
Sure. There are other questions?
I understand, I'm not arguing with you.
This is, I'm changing subjects now, but you asked if there's anything else, this is a response, sorry.
All, all I'm trying to do is clarify for Elizabeth and everybody else, what is that's, that's open. If other questions arise, yeah, we.
Here it is, one more upstairs.
Well, after the planning commission meeting, I was stopped by a planning commission member, he's a Realtor, and he said, what are you guys doing? We're, deals are falling through right now in Signal Mountain because of what's happening here. There's real damage being done to our town. There's, there's real hurt that's taking place with people who, who make a living in one off, off the hook. And that's another reason I'm passionate about this, is I, I'm no longer, it wasn't that I ever pretended, that I never pretended to be neutral, because I didn't even know it existed when it began. But as, as someone said, somebody asked a question, it's, it's our job to come to the place and make a decision, and not all my decision, my finally getting to the place where I think, I think we should be done, which is one of the reasons why I asked Melissa what your questions are. We know the answer to some of your questions that you ask are no. I mean, we know some of those answers now, and so, and we also know, and we can see what's happening in the community.
Yeah, that's just me, that's not the entire council.
And that is totally just me.
Yeah.
That's me speaking for me.
Why I answered, I didn't answer, yes, several.
So then, you should be to get off the fence as well.
Why? I don't have enough information to get off the fence. One of the key things we said, it was very clear at the beginning of this, and several of us said, must improve education for all students first and foremost.
Which isn't something that we can control, because that's not what we get to do. We get to petition the state as to whether or not we're gonna do this, that will be an outside body that does that. And that's one of the reasons I'm having where, where I am now, is it took me a while for it to even make sense, it's like, okay, they can't, that's not what we get to do. We get to choose whether or not it's good for this town to run school district.
Are we debating what would?
Yeah, I don't know where we're going. I was just trying to read this question.
On the agenda?
I'm trying to check the five questions, the five, that's what I wanted to do, that's all I'm doing.
At the end of the meetings, council people have stated their opinion as to where they are, and this is what I'm doing now. And so I can stop, and I know it's important for people to, but this is a big deal.
Well, I'm stating that I still don't have a position until I find out this thing is based on the criteria we set out at the beginning of this thing, which has not wavered in my opinion. Anybody else on this, or do you have anything else? Okay.
Do you want the agenda meetings to, to, for you to be clear about the accusations that someone on this council knows about a development of a school system that is just Signal Mountain? Because I remember any one of us.
Then I will say, there was a text that was missent, asking specifically if the SSBC was done with its work. If it, I mean, you see, you haven't seen it, it was asked specifically if the SSBC had finished the tour, it was missent to another SSBC member who showed that to me. I'm gonna let that person do what that person wants to, and they know what they want to do. That text said, and I can, I can read it, because I wrote it down.
I didn't mean to give it down.
No, you asked, you asked, you pressed, I'm going to answer the question now. It said, can, you don't need it, it said, can we get together to talk about seventeen hundred students plus a building? Can, can Enyuakim and I get together to talk about that and build a budget for seventeen hundred students plus a building like we talked about last Monday, or is the SSBC still under the sunshine law? That was, that was accidentally sent, but at that point, it becomes one, and, uh, Boyd, this is, not Boyd, it's our bill.
So someone from the council sent that text?
Yes. And it, no, not someone from this council, someone from this council received that text. And at that point, the, that is, even though it was an accident, and it's probably okay for it to be an accident, it was one SSBC member communicating about something that's gonna be delivered by another SSBC member, even though it did take place by accident, but something that actually happened. So, that's what it was, so I'm no longer swinging the breeze, but that's still been relatively obscure, but I mean, we've not figured out what's going on.
You're not spying, came from anybody here?
I came to someone here, and also referred to someone here having had a conversation about that very thing. So I am totally applying that because that's what it is. All right, and then, listen, that's what makes me nervous. That's why that happens.
You're nervous before that, you've got a conspiracy theory, and it's just, it's all for this. If none of us could do that, I would never be on board with something that wouldn't include the entire mountain. Every single one of us has said that from the, from day one. So to infer that there's some secret plan of trying to just exonerate, it wouldn't go anywhere even if it is in the works, because none of us would agree to it. And we're all on record saying it. So, that kind of behavior continues the division, because it implies that something illegal or wrong is going on, and it just.
Chris, did you get that text from Dr. Friedel?
No.
Really?
Yes. I did not.
And tomorrow we'll get a record request. And tomorrow we'll get a record request. Right?
Sure.
Can we get one?
So it's me, you're going to talk more.
Thanks, Neil. Want to give me?
Because they've been accusing you of stuff from day one, you know, obviously.
All right, do you have anything else?
Yeah, listen, yeah, one more thing. I apologize for the contentious nature of this. It's not my goal, this isn't what everyone thought this would be.
Imagine, if I had got a text like that, I would have told them no.
So? If it was miss sent, how did I get the text?
I saw.
You didn't see it on my phone?
No, I didn't see it.
All right. Anything else? Is there even close?
Anything? Uh, more reports?
Yeah, if you want, we usually say for January, if you have something you think everybody wants to hear.
In that Saturday for the centennial, there we have one position that needs to be filled. Did we have applications for that? Or did we put those out and have someone in the pipeline?
We have advertised board positions across the board. That we're waiting to get that done this year, we'll be bringing those to the council's work session.
The website is going to be handled by a lady that Kyra Howell had asked to do the substance of the website. So that's going to be updated this month. There was a request to get another article in the paper about the centennial committee. And the, there was a concern about conflict with the James Boulevard project. Will that be more than likely paid by the time we have a centennial? Unfortunately, that's not. But you see, 2019. I didn't know if we were any closer with that, as far as any feedback from the state.
We're just getting debate, the state keeps coming back and forth with our estimate that the engineers submitted. And the only thing, it's.
There was a suggestion that we get with a metal fabricator and use one of the rails to write the word 100 and use the, from the part that's not going to be included in the curve, to get those and get with metal worker to use the word 100 perhaps at two locations in the town. So we could take that rail and bend it into the word 100 somehow.
I mean, we'll be keeping that rail to do whatever with, so we will have some extra.
I might have somebody in my mom to hear that.
Bring any material to them.
Well, I propose another way of cutting it, creating a, because it is something that.
Okay.
Table. I want everybody else to.
Good. What else, David?
Excellent, thank you.
Anything? Boyd, Bill? All right. We've got 10 minutes until kickoff, and we have a closed session after this, correct? So be wary of that. But I have a statement I would like to read, and I've made copies, make copies, Bill, if anybody wants to take one, I think you would. And this is purely from me, I'll make that clear. After last week's joint meeting of the town council and HCDU, it becomes clear we need to address the educational elements in the room. A little more than a year ago, this council made the decision through a vote for, a vote of four to one to consider options on how to better educate our greatest asset, kids on the mountain. That decision was not made lightly. That decision was made with the most fundamental and basic of intentions. It was a decision that has caused a lot of debate, angst, and even some diatribes. For that, well, we hate that there has been hard feelings, but no, that no one wanted heartache. Still, there will not be any apologies, nor should there be, from those on either side of this discussion. And regardless of what the future holds, there is no doubt this community's support for its children will never wane. But after last week's direct and somewhat surprising meeting with the powers that be at Hamilton County School Board, the details behind the decision to explore this option are more important than ever. Notice, our community has provided an unprecedented $10 million to have a high school built. Since Signal Mountain Middle High School has become a reality, our community has provided more than $21 million to assist the school system in their attempt to educate our kids. Yes, $21 million, and all of that money is outside of all of the HCD funding. That extra money that our community has provided has allowed the county to curb what it gives our schools by comparison. There is no other school in our county providing that kind of secondary support. That's a tribute to everyone interested in the betterment of our community, past and present. But it also begs the question of fairness. We have been required to augment a lot of the needs and basics that have helped our schools stay among the best. But if we are going to have to provide more for that level of success, why should we not explore looking at ways to make them even better? Including looking at our own school system. That's not elitist, or entitled, or even intended to offend. But it's a very reasonable question to ask. That's a fair question for we taxpayers from Hamilton County who expect the same support from Hamilton County school system. The struggles of Hamilton County schools as a whole are well documented. Be they test scores, or heartbreaking incidents, or leadership. There are a lot of issues facing our school system and our kids. But this has never been about the struggles of the system. This has, at least in the eyes of most of the council and the extremely accomplished people of the SSBC committee, who have volunteered their time, always been about the fairness and what is best for our kids. The surprising turn of events of last week's, last week's joint meeting forces a need for this statement. Last Thursday, we heard that our community's concerns were a distraction for the new leadership. And that distraction label came at what was slated to be the first community conversation of the new regime. There is no way we can peg two decades of deplorable decisions on Dr. Brian Johnson, the new leadership that have been in place for less than a year. We can expect, though, what we can expect is respect. Respect for the needs of how their system can meet the needs of our community, rather than how our community must meet the needs of their system. We have heard since Dr. Johnson was hired that this is a new day, a new way, a new approach for what we all should believe is the most important use of our county tax dollars, education of our kids. Recognizing this, some of us met with Dr. Johnson and his staff to discuss, in discussion of many issues that would help us improve education on the mountain based on the research and findings that came out of the SSBC report. Those items, as well as several issues and concerns raised and brought directly to the Signal Mountain Town Council, we have little effect, or would have little effect or cost to HCD or the county. To my joy, we have finally found a willing participant to listen, engage, and discuss issues. In a year's time, no other leader or representative other than Mayor Cottenger had the foresight and leadership to engage us in these concerns. Again and again, we heard over a year's time period, I don't understand what you want. I don't know what your issues are. And we are still hearing questions like that from our representatives. This shows a true lack of leadership, a true lack of commitment, and quite frankly, a true lack of concern for our students. It is also of note that I'm unaware in the past year of a single time that our elected representative has engaged, met, discussed, or listened to the group of citizens that had the initial concerns for the future of our schools. Statements like, I think going up on that mountain hardly convey confidence in connection with the constituency. Multiple one-on-one meetings with Dr. Johnson during last month offer some hope and potential resolutions. The discussion and concepts proceeded well, and eventually some HCD staff and town staff and committee members were brought in to work through the details. The items that we had discussed, and I thought we had agreed upon, were as follows. Commitment to the HCD, to span the SSBC committee, provide all documents related to the SSBC committee for HCD's use and help as needed, make resolution to cease seeking ISD and not take to referendum in 2018. Dr. Johnson to announce the compromise and credit his leadership in working with the town, who is investigating the opportunity to separate, to address concerns and mediate a positive solution for improving education on the mountain. Commitment to improving education, and then their commitment to us on helping to improve education on the mountains, including Signal Mountain Middle High School and the pilot program for late starts starting in 2018 and 19 school year. Make that permanent after the first year. Provide two art teachers and one step teacher for Nolan and Thrasher. This will free up MEF funds and not make it necessary to decide we cannot be funded the next school year. Provide similar funding for busing of off-campus and extracurricular activities at levels provided at other county schools. Create an advisory board, SMHCD advisory board, consisting of five members across the mountain community to address mountain school issues similar to the one on Lookout. The SMHCD advisory board would consist of three people appointed by the Signal Mountain Town Council, one appointed by the town of Alderman, town Alderman and Walworth, and one appointed by the Hamilton County representative to our area based on current enrollment in our schools. The Signal Mountain HCD advisory board will have the power to make final decisions on capital gifts to the three schools. It will also provide advice to HCD staff on ideas for other schools in the county to be able to replicate the successes of the Signal Mountain School. The Signal Mountain HCD advisory board will meet with HCD C-level staff members at a minimum of every other month, or more frequently as requested by HCD. We would look into ways of eliminating school fees. Signal and Walworth families will be guaranteed continued zoning for the three Signal Mountain schools. As we understand, you cannot commit guaranteed zoning for the entire mountain due to plant and expected growth. Fund custodial and field maintenance, scene chemicals only, for Signal Mountain Middle School sports fields at comparable levels to the rest of the county schools. Work with town Signal Mountain, an opportunity for additional separate entrance to the Signal Mountain Middle High School for safety of all the students and staff at both the High School, Signal Mountain Middle High School and Nolan Schools. Look at engaging into a similar agreement at East Ridge for use and maintenance of athletic fields and gymnasiums. These are directly from my notes originally created on December 17, 2017, and home as Dr. Johnson and I discussed these issues. If they look or sound familiar, they should. After our meeting on December 21 at Signal Mountain Town Hall with Dr. Johnson here, and two of his staff members, myself, Dr. Freedom, and our town manager to go over the details, at Dr. Johnson's request, I agreed to meet the next morning with Dr. Johnson and Ms. Lennon to lay out the plan for her. After that meeting, I received a call from Ms. Lennon on how excited she was for the improvements, resolution, and she looked forward to getting this done. Only one more page, you bear with me. Somewhere over Christmas, it must have gone wrong. In January through 2018, we were called once again to the HCD office under the guise of reviewing and preparing for the presentation. We met with Dr. Johnson and five HCD members, staff members, several who are friends and neighbors. We were told then, a day prior to our joint meeting last Thursday, that everything we had worked towards was not going to happen. They did not feel it was right because they had not engaged the community. One year's worth of study angst, meetings, opinions was not enough input from this community apparently to cause anything other than a distraction for HCD. Obviously, leaving the meeting and realizing the HCD abandoned a very reasonable resolution was extremely disappointing. We now had an idea, what to, we now had no idea what to expect from a meeting that was called for the sole purpose of outlining a resolution. The hopes and the new leadership was going to be, the hope that the new leadership was going to be a change, agent of change felt hollow. Yes, it extreme, yes, it extremely refreshed, it was extremely refreshing to hear Dr. Johnson say this past Thursday at our meeting, after not hearing it for more than a year, this needs to be about the children. It was refreshing, but it's the main refrain for the majority of the town council, SSBC and community has been saying throughout the entire process. So as many had hoped we would do, we directly engaged the HCD. And once again, it turned into a game of politics. The morning of the joint meeting, one of our representatives came up with a great idea of creating an advisory board. In an article that morning in the Times Free Press, and at the joint meeting, they, sorry, at the joint meeting, they mentioned funding for STEM and arts at the elementary school level. They brought up an earlier start times. They brought up the importance of looking at a second entrance for safety, and several other things were mentioned, but none committed to. It sounded awfully familiar to the multiple meetings all we were, all we were working together on. No one on the committee or on the council is looking for credence in this. We all have the same goal, educating our kids in the best possible way. The reason to share these events is to illustrate that the petty politics, lack of leadership, and lack of focus on kids seems to me, remains the same at HCD. I truly believe that Dr. Johnson got strong-armed into this position. But that does not make it less disappointing. As Dr. Johnson said in our last meeting at HCD, I have never encountered or imagined politics like this could be around education. Dr. Johnson was not able to come out with, will not be able to come out with a true story, but will be forced to protect those who sway his position. One thing that has become blatantly clear is that someone along the line had studded a very reasonable resolution loaded with inexpensive improvements to education for the entire mountain community and ideas and improvement for the rest of the county. My observation from this process after one year is that if there were, are not very drastic changes in the politics, thinking, and leadership at HCD, particularly the board, we will be facing much of the same. And our little community that is such a distraction will not even receive the simplest of improvements in education, because instead of engaging us, they rather teach us a lesson. An interesting attitude from those entrusted to educate our children. As one of the council members is quick to remind everyone, I do not speak for the council. I am the weak town mayor at Signal Mountain. Interestingly, even the town or the SSBC is compensated and has absolutely nothing to gain financially out of this endeavor. But no one will ever against me, it is not a good thing to ask these questions and tackle hard issues. Regardless, I will continue to hold out hope that we will see some of these items discussed by Dr. Johnson, discussed with Dr. Johnson come to fruition. I will also continue to hold out hope that our county representative on the HCD board and those that influence them can understand and change the way they engage the communities. We all need to work together and be on the same page to affect real positive change with our, within our educational system. The main focus must now and always remain on the children. Thank you.
That's an excellent statement.
That's all ahead, have we got anything else? We're a little after kickoff time, thank you all very much.